Okay, welcome everybody to our council meeting of April 5th, 2022. We'll move forward with the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion on that place? Moved by Council Druck, seconded by Council Pudle. Be resolved that the council of town Niqwa approved the regular meeting agenda for April 5th, 2022. All in favor? And if anybody's had a chance to review the minutes, no errors, no omissions. Can I move forward with a motion on that place? Moved by Captain Mary Henley, seconded by Council Costinjard. Be resolved that the council of town Niqwa approved the minutes of the regular meeting held March 15th, 2022, as circulated, all in favor? Okay. Okay, we are into council reports. Anybody have a council report tonight?
I have one, I guess.
Okay, Council Pudle.
The storefront improvement incentive program received an application for approval later this evening. Niqwa Blaststone Co-op has put in a funding request in the amount of $5,000 to cover, to assist in covering the total cost of over $35,000 to refurbish the highway sign located at the old Co-op agro site, as well as replacing the existing storefront entrance located at the Co-op home center on Highway 5. There will be a resolution to approve the application later in tonight's evening. That's everything.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council Diddo?
On March 16th, the library board met for the WMRL and we finalized our budget for this year. And even with our population increase, we were able to still keep the same population in regards to the amount that we fund. So just to let people know, the amount that we funded for the library is $51,621 for this past year. And as you see, you know, we do get a lot out of that because, you know, just the cost of one possible employee at the library could cost that quite easily. So we get access to all library services and I just wanted to, to just remind people that, you know, arts and library in the town of Niqwa is really an important thing. And I think it's a good service and a good bang for our buck that we get. We do pay $11.20 per capita per person. We are going to raise that slightly in the coming year, but we're still well under the provincial average. So it's still a good thing for Niqwa. I also wanted to report back on the Rossburn subdivision Trail Association. We've had a couple meetings scheduled over the last month. And we're going to be having our AGM on May 5th. It will be at Riley Mountain National Park, which is a stop just slightly off the trail. It's a sub-trail that's connected to our trail that goes through. And we've been working on grants along the trail to help support making the trail that much better. There's almost 200 kilometers of trail from here to the border, from here to Saskatchewan, is our section of trail that I'm referring to. And if anyone's interested, to email the town of Niqwa or myself, and I can hook you up with the link to Trails Manitoba's AGM on April 30th. So there's a virtual AGM meeting if you're interested in participating or joining. The general public is allowed to. And that's something I can forward if anyone is interested in joining on April 30th virtually.
Okay, Maggie Jason? Captain Mary Henley?
On March 24th, Niqwa on area, and, Niqwa, Niqwa area district, and anyways, had their AGM. And as so of that, there are some of the highlights, meals last year. There was 6,223 meals. And so interesting, like it was kind of split 50/50, half for takeouts and half for pickups. And so that number is actually up a little bit from pre-pilot years. Lifeline, they've completed 14 new installs recently. Volunteer income tax program is a program that's offering once again to seniors and vulnerable persons on limited income has been established. And then they just went over some of the last, some of the projects over the past year, Huxville holidays. And so not a whole lot new there, but it's nice to see that group continuing, and something like possibly exercise programs starting at the end of the spring. With fire departments, we received a new air compressor valued at $48,000 from the office of the fire commissioner. So this is in regards to being with mutual aid and to replace the old system. So the old system was 45 PSI system and the new one is 60. And it was nice that, no thanks to Denise for planning ahead and that the building was upgraded enough so that the new larger system could be put in there. So that was nice to receive. Also from fire chief Eve, he's stated that our fire truck is about 50% built. So we're hoping to see that by this summer. And the last thing I have as a local resident has asked that all Public Works and all of our staff be thanked for the great job that they've been doing recently. So it's nice to, it's nice to hear when people are recognizing the work that our people are doing around it.
Perfect, thank you Brian. Okay, that's it for our council reports. Denise, I guess you're up, I have your operations.
Hey, so I was waiting last meeting. And I was actually at the province attending a conference on behalf of the Sanlado Association of Water Operators. But so I attended the event conference, it was an interesting event. So I got to see some new products, a little bit of research for some upcoming projects that we're going to have come over here. So some new contacts, new businesses, we're doing good. Since then, we've also concluded all of our seasonal and summer student hiring. So those students will be starting, I believe, May 2nd? You should mean they're starting on the Monday? Yep, May 2nd, so we've got all our positions filled now. And we have that many students back out at this point, so we're optimistic it'll all come true. We posted a few, I think Nicole's looking still for some lifers. So if anyone's aware of anyone, we appreciate some, some resumes coming on the last side of things. We started quoting for some machinery, we had it in the budget to be approved. So I'm hoping to have the next meeting, even more reading first reading of the budget, that we might do some pre-ordering of some equipment just because the time delays. So hopefully I have all those quotes in at that time for the next meeting. Many residents may have noticed three sweeping hasn't begun already. Even though there's still ice in the gutter lines, it's warm enough to start sweeping some of those streets and get a first round done. So we're trying to get as much of that cleared off with all that snow and ice we had all winter. So we're pretty grimy. We're looking to pay also for a bit of garbage and some pet waste laying around. So we've already had Scott, he's starting in on parks this year. So he's starting working and getting stuff prepped up for that so that we can start a good cleaning and scouring community. I know I've been contacting some residents asking to do some cleanup. So we've directed them to add some clean materials as well. On the front of the water reservoir at the water tree plant, things are moving along really nice actually. All flow testing has been done, all water retention has been done. We've got some hookups and some scheduled days that are going to be happening for the times now. And there's kind of things been slated and some proofing of the rest of the work out there. So that project is moving along nice. On the RCMP side, the building moves on again nice. It's kind of maybe hard to tell, there's a big bubble wrapped around it, but they're out of trouble on the inside. A lot of that trouble works done, a lot of work's done. So it's also moving along very nicely inside there. We have questions, that's what we provide for.
So do you know how many summers students were hired?
I forget the exact number, but I think we've complemented it, we have two this year.
Okay.
So we have two at both works for sure again. The new addition will be one of the bike park. And I think we have two, maybe three at the cemetery for ground maintenance. And then the park's probably going to have about six to eight students in that zone. The other one, for us to mention too, is the park lake. It was also confirmed that we started some of that work there. But I believe it's kind of shutting down now, right? Because a lot of the...
Yes, there's a restriction period from the end of March right through the end of June. Maybe you cannot do any work in the long way. So we did that, they showed up some of the erosion problems that they found when they started to pull out the old bridge. And they will return when they're able to.
And why did they shut down? Is that because of...
Just spring thaw. They have to be at that...
Department of Fisheries and Oceans restricted from entering the waterway and feeding.
Which is okay, but as I said, they have the pre-prepped work done. And now this is up waiting for the materials to arrive. So we're sitting okay on that.
Okay, thank you Denise. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we are on the correspondence, Colleen, Dan Mazer, our MP.
So I'm not going to read this all to you. We talked about before the RCMP unionization. When they unionized, we realized this would be retroactive pay that's going to have to come forth in the municipalities that are entering into an agreement with the RCMP for the services they provide. So Dan, the member of parliament for Dalmatia Wanderer in Niqwa, has actually written, announced the Minister of Public Safety regarding the collective bargaining agreement that was announced. And he's proposing as well that the federal government absorb all the one-time useful retroactive costs associated with implementing the current RCMP collective agreement. So we're hoping that bears some weight at the federal level. We've done our lobbying here provincially through the AM and we will continue to do so. And we'll just wait her out and see.
So we got there, or you received their back pay already, the RCMP?
They, they're starting to, I don't think they got full on some yet, but yeah.
Okay. Okay, finances. Everybody's had a chance to review the February 2022 financial statement. There's no questions. Can I move forward with a motion on that? Moved by Council Diddo, seconded by Council Druck. Be resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ended February 28th, 2022. All in favor? Okay. And we are looking into the accounts for May, March 2022. Everybody's had a chance to review those? Everybody's comfortable? Can I move forward with a motion on that? Moved by Council Costinjard, seconded by Captain Mary Henley. Be resolved that we approve the accounts for March 2022 totaling $739,748 cents as reviewed in representing checks 202, 200338 to 2022, 00531, but excluding 2022, 00357 and 2022, 0486. All in favor? Okay. Okay. Council Druck, Captain Mary Henley are choosing themselves this one, and Brian for the second one after that. Okay, we're going to move forward with the finance for the checks on Home Hardware and Coop for March 2022. Can I get a motion on that place? Council Pudle, seconded by Council Costinjard. Be resolved that we approve check number 2022, 00357 and 2022, 00486 for March 2022 to Home Hardware and Niqwa Blaststone Coop totaling $4,887.38. All in favor? Okay. Okay, we are moving into the new business, the storefront improvement. Council Pudle has already talked about what that is. Is there any questions or concerns before we move forward with that motion on the storefront? If not, can I get a motion? Moved by Council Costinjard, seconded by Council Pudle. Be resolved that we approve and reapproved the application to the storefront improvement incentive program submitted by Niqwa Blaststone Coop for the refurbishment of highway signings at the old Coop agro site and the replacement of the front entrance at the home center incentive provided at 50%, up to a maximum of $5,000. All in favor? Okay. Okay, we have a chamber of commerce fair request.
So as we all know, with the restrictions being lessened by the province for COVID, the chamber is actually looking at hosting a fair this year. So we're writing for you to request permission from the council of town Niqwa to declare the 2022 Niqwa District Chamber of Commerce Fair a community event to entitle us to obtain a community event liquor permit for the period Friday, May 27th through Sunday, May 29th. Upon approval, we will contact the fire chief and the RCMP to raise their assistance with the permit for the event. And if there's any other requirements, we can let them. So the resolution, if you're in support of declaring that a community event, will let them be able to get their permit.
Any comments?
Can't wait to see it.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, nice to have something to talk about again. I will move forward with that motion. Moved by Council Diddo, seconded by Council Pudle. Be resolved that the council of town Niqwa declared the 2022 Niqwa District Chamber of Commerce Fair as a community event, entitled them to obtain a community event liquor permit for the period of February, Friday, May 27th through to Sunday, May 29th, 2022. All in favor? Okay. Okay, the food cycler that we've talked about before, Colleen.
So I'm trying to summarize for the public best I can, and that short of giving you a big handos, what this is about. So this is called food cycler, food waste diversion. It's a municipal pilot program. The average Canadian household produces nearly 475 pounds of food waste per year with less than 5% currently being recycled in North America. Recently exposed to a pilot program in the community of Ontario targeting food waste reduction, our economic development officer Marilyn proved brought forth the possibility of conducting something similar here in Niqwa. This following month, heels of a school were actually running a car stop pickup collection program. And our thoughts of doing a brown waste pickup for food scraps. So we thought if we pilot this and see how effective it could be, there is a possibility we would actually reduce expenses and improve our greenhouse gas emissions targets and things like that. So the pilot is conducted by Food Cycle Science and offers a home-based approach to food waste recycling. The technology not only reduces the lengthy time of a traditional composter, but diverts food waste from landfills and has proven to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions. Similar to a composter, the food cycler appliance, which basically resembles a bread maker in size and scope, is pretty much what it looks like. You set it on your counter or wherever you want to put it. It is not an offensive looking appliance at all, it's actually quite attractive. And it just takes hours to process these scraps instead of ones. The units use less electricity than a desktop computer and offer an odorless, easy-to-use alternative to a traditional composter. Following several discussions we've already had this year, meeting with Food Cycle Science, they agreed that Niqwa would be great fit for pilot program. And they proposed to study involved in 100 households in Niqwa. The appliance will process two liters of food waste per cycle, converting it into a nutrient-rich soil amendment that can be added to lawns, plants or gardens. And some instances, depending on the volume, you'd actually fertilize it for home heating purposes. It is estimated that every food cycler deployed will divert at least two tons of food over its expected lifetime of that particular appliance. And based on market rates of $100 per ton of waste, 100 participating households in Niqwa divert 200 tons of food waste, resulting in major savings at the landfill and the diversion of greenhouse gas emissions. As of this date, 33 Canadian municipalities have signed on to participate in the food cycler program. The food cycle units supplied by Food Cycle Science will be distributed to 100 willing participants. And the actual cost of each unit is $500. However, as part of the pilot program, food cycle will contribute $200 toward that cost, or 40%. The town will contribute $125, or 25%. And leaving $175, or 35% of the cost to be paid by a participating household. In return for obtaining that food cycle unit at the reduced price of $175, program participants will be required to track weekly waste diversion over a 12-week period. And then at the end of the 12-week period, this data will be reported to the town of Niqwa in a final survey completed. They will be able to keep the food cycler after that period of time. We're targeting a trial to begin on or before September 1st, wrapping it up by December 31st of this particular year. So if the council agrees to approve the pilot project, administration will begin the process to set forth the program criteria to solicit community engagement and identify participating households. In addition to 100 that will be participating in the survey, there is an add-on component to the program. We can do 10 extra locations in the community. We're proposing right now that it could be targeting schools or elderly housing units to see what effect it might take on in positions or locations that weren't necessarily a residential hold in specific to a single family. So we're hoping that you support this program as we're quite excited to see what it's going to do for us.
Any questions, any comments? I don't think we've all discussed them, I think it's a great idea. And yeah, and you were saying you think by September, right? That's fair.
Yeah. We want to wrap it up in this fiscal year. So that's part of the program with Food Cycle Science is that they can get their data done in 2022.
Do they have a specific criteria for the families that you're looking at for the 100 units?
No, no. If our radio is here, she can speak to it. I guess what happened in Ontario, the city actually posted that these units were available. They said it only took days for the uptake. They were worried that the $175 would deter people from wanting to participate. And that was not the case. All of the units were spoken for very, very quickly. We're not certain what the uptake would be here. So clearly, you know, it's got to be something committed to composting already or recycling initiatives. So we wouldn't mind, you know, paying 35% of a $500 unit to have that in their household. And then just for, you know, reporting the data out is a pretty good deal, so.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move forward with our resolution. Moved by Council Costinjard, seconded by Captain Mary Henley. Be resolved that the council of town Niqwa entered an agreement with Food Cycle Science Corporation to conduct a food cycle food waste diversion pilot project. Be further resolved that the cost of the food cycle units be cost shared between Food Cycle Science 40%, the town of Niqwa 25%, and 100 participating household residents 35%. Be resolved that 10 additional units be obtained on a cost share basis between Food Cycle Science 65%, the town of Niqwa 25%, and 10 targeted community locations, 10% to determine the potential waste diversion in locations such as schools, elderly, housing events, etc., etc. All in favor? Okay. Okay, we're in the bylaws. Jeff, are you doing that, or Colleen doing that, or one or two of them? Shut up, please, I don't have a question. Is there anyone in particular to start with?
Start with 3209.
Okay, perfect, that's one I have. So yeah, this is bylaw 3209-22. The intent of this bylaw is a map amendment to the town of Niqwa zoning bylaw, which will be attached to and being part of the town of Niqwa zoning bylaw number 3184-18. As amended, is hereby further amended in order that lands described as follows. Lot 6 and 7, plan 6991, located in part of northwest 281415 west in the town of Niqwa, as shown outlined in a heavy solid line on map attached here too and marked as Schedule A, and make part of the amending bylaw number 3215-22. Be rezoned from MH industrial heavy zone to the proposed RN2 residential multi-two zone, multi-unit two zone. So this is probably more familiar, it's on Dominion Street, 553 and 571 Dominion Road. It's the location on the east side where it used to be the old hattery. There's a group that's just looking to develop in residential multi-unit zones. And this will be the first step in this process. Once this receives first reading, we can proceed with public hearing or circulation and public hearing prior to approval, so.
Right, and the first reading, that's just what that is, right? It says to get everything else rolling.
Tonight, yes, that's correct, yeah. Just looking for first reading in order that that can, that is the go ahead to proceed with. Unless there's some alterations or changes, but it's a pretty, in my opinion, it's a pretty straightforward request, so.
Okay, now I think we've had this discussion before, so if there's nothing, we'll just move forward with the resolution?
Moved by, this is our first reading. Moved by Council Diddo, seconded by Council Druck. Be resolved that bylaw number 3209-22, being a bylaw of town Niqwa to amend the zoning of lot 6 and 7, plan 6991, at 553 and 571 Dominion Road, from MH to industrial heavy zone to the proposed RN-2 residential multi-unit two zone, be now read for the first time. All in favor? Okay. Okay. Now we're to bylaw 3209-22. You just did that.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Okay, how about 3215? Yeah, okay, no, I'm sorry, I should have read that one more line. 3215-22. Perfect. So yeah, so this is bylaw 3215-22. And yet again, it's another map amendment to the town of Niqwa zoning map. Attached to and being part of the town of Niqwa zoning bylaw number 3184-18 is amended. As amended, is hereby further amended in order that lands described as follows. Parcel 1, plan 5695, N L T O. Parcel 3, plan 5847, N L T O. And parcel A, plan 5428, N L T O is located in the part of southeast 321415W in the town of Niqwa, as shown outlined in a heavy solid line on a map attached here too and marked as Schedule A, and make part of the amending bylaw to be rezoned from its current ML industrial light zone to a proposed RM2 residential multi-two, or multi-unit two zone. This probably, I guess it does have physical address right now. It's, it would be if you were in the West Park Place, there's two parcels, these parts of land are just open vacant land on the west side of the road leading into West Park Place. It would be probably more adjacent to Gil Drive. There's been a request to construct multi-unit residential dwelling, two multi-unit buildings on there, and requiring the zoning amendment to make them comply. So yet again, this is the same. It will be first reading and then we can proceed with public hearing and circulation from there. Okay, no questions, no comments. Jane's first reading, we'll move forward with that. Moved by Council Costinjard, seconded by Captain Mary Henley. Be resolved that bylaw number 3215-22, being a bylaw of town Niqwa to amend the zoning of parcel 1, plan 5695, parcel 3, plan 5847, and parcel A, plan 5428, from ML industrial light zone to RN-2 residential multi-unit two zone will be now read for a first time. All in favor? Okay. Okay. Forgot about the business. Everybody have anything they want to enlighten us on, Council Pudle?
You know, I'd like to bring forward, as you know, I'm also a member of the Citizens on Patrol in Niqwa. And we all know that we have a problem with our traffic on the highway and especially coming into town, and it's becoming dangerous. And a lot of the members of the Citizens on Patrol, in order to help support the community, after we've been trying to apply to the province in order to get a speed reduction, they took it upon themselves to set up a traffic study of their own. So what they did is they sat on the corner of Highway 16 East and Road 86 West. So that's where the former Brahmas is. And they sat there for a two-hour period on March 15th. And what they found was an incredible amount of vehicles. It was between the hours of 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM. And in just two hours, there was a total of 1,092 vehicles that passed either way, in either direction. And on March 17th, they sat there again at the same, actually this time they were at Highway 16 East and Broadway. And they counted the traffic again, and they even surpassed that number at 1,245 vehicles. In these vehicles, it also included approximately 10% of them were studies. So it's not just regular vehicles. And of course, some of it had to do with the traffic from the high life, the plant itself, especially during those hours. So they decided to do a couple more days with different hours. So they set up again on Broadway and Highway 16. And this time they did it early in the morning at different hours throughout the day. And they had an average of 550. So again, obviously with the changeover at the plant, you're going to see an increased flow of traffic. But I think this is something that we could possibly include in our future applications in order to help reduce the speed. And it could also substantiate that we do have a high number of traffic at certain points throughout the day, which needs to be considered. So I just wanted to share that with council and bring it forward on behalf of Citizens on Patrol. And I will email a copy of our summary to everyone here today to share. Pretty impressive. And I'll give the original data sheets to you also. Colleen?
Good for Citizens on Patrol. Yeah, that was a big number today.
I'll maybe just add to that, we were fortunate to have Minister Dolan Luke here, the Minister of Transportation and Emergency, to meet with us last Friday in regards to the speed zone application we put forth in 2020, being the second. being the second application we sent forward with the elimination of the highway traffic port a year or more ago. Uh, the minister is actually in charge of any reductions that would occur in the speed limits. And he actually came out here, which was nice to have a good visual of what's going on and talk to us about it and talk to us about our previous applications. So, um, he didn't indicate one way or the other, but I think it was a very favorable for those that were able to join for that meeting. It was a favorable meeting and he was taking it quite seriously, so.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have anything they want to say? Okay, otherwise we will move forward with the German. Moved by Councilor Pudlow. Seconded by Councilor Costincheck. Be resolved that the council of town Niqwa will now adjourn the trade of the meeting of council at 7:30 PM. All in favor? Okay.